Is it working?
Yes.
I call this meeting to order. Could you please stand and salute the flag? In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10, 2024, notice was sent to the home news tribune, the Tapinto Linden Star Ledger, Union County Local Source, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to hearing, as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly meeting under the Sunshine Law.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Present.
Ms. Pino.
Present.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Present.
Ms. Thomas.
Present.
Ms. Ulyss.
Present.
Ms. Armstead.
Present.
Ms. Carrillo.
Ms. Centron.
Present.
And Dr. Burgam.
Present.
There's a lot going on this evening, so we're gonna be making a brief modification to our agenda. Be here with us, we're gonna go through everything. But there's a lot going on, and we, as board members, some of our board members have to go to different events because we want to recognize our students. So we are trying to change things up tonight. So we would like to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve minutes of work session February 27 and the regular meeting held on February 29. Speculating for a second.
Second.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes, to the 27th, abstain from the 29th.
Ms. Ulyss.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Centron.
Yes.
And Dr. Burgam.
Yes.
This is a section of the meeting that I really like to hear because I like to hear from the public. So we're gonna get with comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand Fit Here on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, members of the public would be limited to speak on agenda items for three minutes. For any member of the public who wants to come up and speak, you will notice that we have a clock here, and it will start when, at three minutes, and it will count down. We ask that when the clock is at zero, you wrap up your comment because we don't want the meeting to go on longer than it should. Don't get me wrong, every comment is important. We are just asking if you could keep it to the three minutes. Thank you.
Craig Haller in 120 Donaldson Place. This really doesn't happen to the agenda, but I'd like to point out that the Halloween parade will be October 27 of this year, that paperwork will be following shortly. Now, my comments about the agenda item in the education report, there's two items, so I'm not sure if I can talk about both of them. The first one refers to Items 1830 and 36, which is the workshop that different staff members are going to, the role of school climate team. I was just wondering what or how this will benefit the students, and can I get a copy of any information used at this workshop? The second item, if I'm allowed, has to do with Item Number 12, Title One Carryover Funds for Use for Family Engagement Supply. If this money is left over from last year, should this have been returned to taxpayers?
Thank you for your comment. Very interesting questions. Thank you very much. We would come, we will review this information, and we will get back to you. Mrs. Perkins?
Yes, one thing is for the Climate and Culture PD, each school must have a Climate and Culture Committee that consists of a social worker, a teacher, and a parent, and a student. And so the professional development that they're attending is in alignment with state regulation to bring back into the school to ensure that students and staff are, voices are heard in a safe and supportive environment.
And this is state mandate?
Yes, Climate and Culture Committee teams are in every building in every school, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then the Title One funds, this is, this is grant?
This is federal grants.
Federal grant funding. And so when they say the carryover funds, it depends on like the date, I don't know the...
Yeah, but this wouldn't be money that could go back to the taxpayers. This is money that we got from the federal government.
So it has to go towards our programming. So to clarify, no, this does not go back to the taxpayers. This is federal grant funding. And what I was seeking clarity on was that we find out at this time of the year what funding is left over, and which allows us to now still embed it into the schools. And so that's why you see it here, that it's still being applied for this school year.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi, Donna Hernandez, 133 Princeton Road. As I brought up last month about the state testing with prom being on the same day, I saw that the date for the, because our snow day, we had one left, so it was moved to June 24 with our students having that as their last day. Talking to, you know, students and parents, it's not fair that our seniors have to go back the next day for graduation. And I know state testing was moved off of that Thursday and Friday, but it still wasn't recommended to give that Friday of Labor Day weekend off, the day after prom. Students go away for the weekend. You know, you're not gonna have a lot of students probably in school. You know, teachers who have a lot of students missing in class, they're not gonna start a new lesson or start reviews for, I guess, you know, finals. So I just wanted to bring that up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. The snow day buyback was board approved last April. And on the calendar, it stated that the first snow buyback day would be the last day of school. So for this school year, and I know in the past that snow buyback days did fall on Memorial Day Friday, but for this calendar that was board approved last year this time, it did indicate. So the changing of the state testing, because it did fall on prom, was not, didn't have anything to do with the snow buyback day. This was what was approved from last year for that Friday.
Maybe it's something to look into because the last several years, as long as I've been at the high school, prom's been on that Thursday of Memorial Weekend.
Yes, correct.
So maybe when you do the calendar next year, that's something to look into.
Thank you.
They have a very quiet crowd. Anyone else have any comments? All right, so at this time, we're gonna make some of the changes to our board meetings because some of the board members may have to leave. So here goes the board president's report. On behalf of the Linden Board of Education, I want to welcome students, guests, and community members to the Linden Board of Education, March 24 meeting. Yet, March 21st meeting. We are eight months into our 2024 school year, and a lot has happened. But our students are resilient. They are strong. And regardless of what is going on in the world, our students stay the course. We adults can learn so much from this generation if we only take the time to listen. In the moment of listening, I would like all the students, because this is something that really interests me. I would like all the graduates who graduated in June, the seniors graduating in June, could you stand here in this room? Now I'm gonna ask you a question. Young lady, I wanna ask you a question. How many of you have, both of you young ladies, have you gotten any scholarships for college yet? You got a scholarship? Could you come to the mic? I wanna hear you. Yeah, I'm sure everybody wanna hear you. Yes. Yes.
I was recently accepted into the Naval Academy, and I also received the Space Force ROTC scholarship to any school of my choosing, as well as receiving scholarships at Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute and receiving a spot in Rochester Institute of Technology's accelerated masters and bachelor's program.
What about the next young lady? Did you get any scholarships yet? You wanna come up so we could hear you? How, yes, what about you?
I'm gonna go to Widener University in PA and play for their program.
Speaking of Mike, we can't hear you yet.
I'm going to Widener University in PA, and I'm gonna play for their soccer program.
Oh, you go good. Yes, thank you very much then.
You're welcome.
Yes, okay, thank you, yes. The reason why I am doing this is not to put any student on the spot. It is, it's a passion of this board that every student that graduate from Linden High get a scholarship to go to college. So what the principals have been saying, Mr. Coons and different people have been saying is that we are reaching out to you guys, often asking you to start applying for scholarships. We want you to start applying. It doesn't matter if you're in the ninth grade, the 10th grade, the 11th grade. Start applying, get engaged. Nobody wanna graduate from college with $40,000, $50,000 in student loans if they could graduate with zero loans. Right? All right, so as I will continue, as we prepare for graduation and moving up ceremonies, we have a lot to celebrate. School violence is on the decline, our students continue to adjust to the different initiatives that are being introduced, and that is amazing. However, in the midst of our celebration, many of us had to stop and grieve because we lost one of Linden's well-loved superintendent, Dr. Tomasic, Rocky to his friends. Rocky has worked to the, has worked in the Linden School District for many years. He has left, and he returned. But this time is his final departure. As I reflect on the, on a life well-lived, I think about how fragile life is. One moment you are here, and the other moment you are gone. A short while ago, Rocky was sitting next to me making decisions for the Linden School District, and today, he is with his maker. I could only imagine what his family is going through right now. Dr. Tomasic was an amazing human being. He was genuine and honest. He was genuine and honest. He knew exactly where you stood with him. He was controlled and got straight to the point and spoke the truth, even when the truth was difficult to hear. Some of us act like tomorrow is promised. But this loss was a reminder to me that we must live in the moment. Speak the truth, even when the truth may be unpopular. Respect each other and be kind to each other because the present will always be a gift. Thank you. I know Aunt Brianna Armstead, she would like to say something as well.
Yes, I had a few things to say because I have to leave early because my little sister, Abigail Armstead, is starring in the lead role at the high school's play Mamma Mia. So I have to go support my baby sister. I'm very excited. So I apologize to everybody for my early departure. I will be leaving within the next five minutes. And I also want to announce that the TV and film production class, we have a fundraiser going on. I'm not saying this to brag, but I'm very excited about it. And I myself personally have raised $1,690. The class as a whole has raised $4,220. If you guys are interested in donating, you can contact me at my Board of Education email at barmstead@lindenps.org. Any and everything will help. Even if you don't have anything to contribute, sharing it is enough. Support is free. Please support our kids. We have, they have a really fantastic opportunity to go to a workshop in Disney to really learn about the television and film process and how to become, how to get immersed into that industry. That's an industry that I have a background in. And I think it's really, it will be really be something that will be instrumental for our students. So please, if you can donate, that would be greatly appreciated. I would not feel okay if I did not get a chance to speak about Dr. Tomasic because he meant a lot to our family. Today, I'm speaking with a heavy heart as I acknowledge the life of one of the kindest people I've ever met. I don't know if it's possible to not have loved him because he was such a genuine person. I have been battling with feelings of regret upon hearing the news of his passing, wishing that I could have asked for one more piece of advice or sat down and picked his brain a little bit longer. Because for every ounce of kindness in him, it was matched with intelligence. I admire how witty he was and how quick he was on his feet. Nothing got past him. And instead of using his knowledge as a weapon, he used it as a tool for anyone that was around him. He was more than a colleague. He was basically family. And I will never forget how you were there for my family or how he dared to be the voice of reason against injustice. I remember the very first story that my dad told me about him was when he first served as superintendent for our district. I remember him saying how that Dr. Tomasic wanted to hire a qualified African-American assistant superintendent because he believed that administration should be reflective of its population and how he was ran out of his position for doing what was right. He will never be forgotten. Dr. T touched the lives of so many. He will forever be in my heart, my family's heart, and the entire Board of Education's heart. You are a mentor, a friend, and a confidant. And I hope that everything that I'm doing now makes you proud as you watch down above us. We love you, Dr. T, and we thank you, your beautiful family, for sharing you with us. Thank you. Thank you all.
Hey, Ms. Armstead, would you believe I went out looking to raise money for Disney? I ain't reached $1,600 yet, but guys, I actually raised $500 so far. And I'm going after your $1,600.
Okay, well, make sure you donate with my link because I don't like to lose, so. Brianna Armstead, everybody. Bye, guys.
Anything else before we? All right, so our next, our next report is our superintendent's report. Anyone else is leaving? Was there anybody in? I guess nobody in my way to see nothing, right? So continue.
Good evening, everyone. My superintendent's report starts off with acknowledging our members who have passed on. And as Dr. Berghammer and Ms. Armstead stated, it is a great loss for losing Dr. Rocco G. Tomasic. He was hired in the Linden Board of Education in 1996 as an NJROTC naval instructor. He served in that position for seven, well, he was in our district for 17 years. And he taught the Naval Science, excuse me, at Linden High School. And then he became a vice principal and then the assistant superintendent from 2002 to 2008. January of 2009, he became the superintendent of schools until 2013. Dr. Tomasic returned back to our district as the interim superintendent in October of 2022 through June of 2023. Dr. Tomasic was, he passed on March 9th. Also, we have Charlotte Gessler. She was hired by the Linden Board of Education in 1960 as a special education teacher. She taught second grade students at school number four for 13 years. In 1973, she was appointed as a learning disability teaching consultant until her retirement until 2001. Ms. Gessler passed on March 9th as well. May peace and love and memories comfort the families of Rocco and Charlotte during this difficult time. May they both rest in peace. They are our dear retired colleagues, and they will always hold a special place in our hearts. We have a retirement for this evening. Melody Olson, she started her teaching career in 1991. For the last 32 years, Melody serves as a pre-k teacher at school number nine. She plans to retire in June of this year. On the agenda, you see that Arlene Susko is listed. However, we are going to be pulling that retirement on this month's agenda, and more will come in the future. So congratulations to Ms. Olson on her retirement, her passion and dedication to our district. On behalf of all of the educators of the Linden Board of Education, we wish her the best retirement has to offer with peace, health, and just joyful life experiences. Our staff attendance patterns for the month of March, while today is the 21st, we're pretty consistent with what it was from last year. This year, we have 36% of absences. Last year, it was 40%. Overall of our absences, we've been consistent for the last four months. 62% of those absences needed a substitute. As I stated earlier, our snow day buyback is on this agenda. It will be adjusting the last day of school for students, which will now be on June 24th. And the Linden High School graduation will be held at Tiger Stadium on June 25th. Also on the agenda, please take note of the end-of-the-year school calendar, where it indicates when half-days will begin. Elementary moving up ceremonies, testing, and more importantly, I did just say the end-of-the-year school calendar. So to all of our staff and our students, please keep on pushing forward. And let's get through this last trimester, last few months strong. We need you. There's talk, and we are aware that the solar eclipse is coming upon us on April 8th. That is the day that we do return back from school, from spring break. Spring break begins on March 28th, and students return on April 8th. So for the solar eclipse, we are looking at purchasing protective glasses for our students and staff for anyone who plans to look up at the solar eclipse. So we will remind our students, we'll speak to our science supervisor also of how this can be an amazing learning experience for everyone. But safety first. So I'd like to acknowledge our student representative to the board, Ms. Azuri Rainey, is homesick right now. She had her mom reach out to express that she is saddened that she couldn't be here this evening. But she wanted everyone to know that if she could, she would. So please keep her in your thoughts. So before we transition into two presentations, I'm excited, as I stated, that spring break is upon us. So I would like to wish each and every one of you, for those celebrating the holiday Easter, a wonderful Easter. I'm told that the city is going to be continuing with the Easter Bunny is going to be traveling around town soon. So that notification flyer has gone out to all families today. And it's just a time to just relax and have a great time. So happy spring break to everyone. Get excited right there. Get excited. I see that. All right, that's it. Spring break is coming. And so now, we are going to transition because we have a few sports recognition, and I'm going to call up Mr. Firestone to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you again for having us. It is truly a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize some of our students' athletic achievements so far this school year. I would first like to thank Superintendent Mrs. Perkins, the entire Board of Education, Board President Dr. Berghammer, Assistant Superintendent of Support Mrs. Lewis, Mr. Sarah Piglia, and Mr. Coons. I cannot tell you how grateful I am for all of your support. I would also like to thank our coaches and parents. We can only do so much without the help of all of you and the rest of our community. At this time, I would like to have the JV Boys Basketball Team, please come up. I would like to congratulate our JV Boys Basketball Team for winning the JV Union County Championships versus Plainfield. This is the first time we won the tournament since our coach, Mike Campo, was a member of the team, which was over 10 years ago. Members of the team, Raheem Tate, Mohammed Sis, Jawan Gass, Alexander Augustine, Isaiah Morrison, Musan Hurd, Jacob Alamo, Adrian Surghat, Yusef Armstead, Xavier Lagone, Jalen Excellent, and Abraham Des Rosiers. Congratulations again to our JV Boys Basketball Team and Coach Mikey Campo. Okay. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to say a few words about our female wrestlers. Before I speak, would the entire girls' wrestling program, please, come up? Members of the team were Senior Captain Leila Soto, Captain Becky Trigoso, Jasira Baez, Janissa Barahona, Johanna Jones, Erica Martinez, Maya Austin, Adriana Fernandez, Jaylene Arias, Heaven Rivera, Soraya Edwards-Mara, Manager Allison Gomez, Manager Zoe Mora, and of course, Coach Alvaro Fernandez. Wow, am I proud of this team. Some highlights for our girls' team. This is the first year ever with a full girls' wrestling schedule. The program has grown from two girls last season to 11 girls this season. On December 22nd, they defeated Elizabeth 36 to 24 in their first girls' dual meet ever at home. Elizabeth has had a team for over five years. At the Union County Girls Championship, we had two champions and two runner-ups. They finished eighth out of 38 teams in the region. We had two girls qualify for the state tournament in Atlantic City and finished 27th out of 85 schools. Some individual honors. Adriana Fernandez, freshman, Union County Champion at 114 pounds. First girl in Union County history to be crowned UCC Girls Champion. First match ever won at Girls County Tournament ever. She won a total of 23 matches this season. Becky Trigoso, Jr. She placed second at the Union County Championships, third place at Regions at 152. She was a New Jersey State Qualifier and placed top 12 in New Jersey at her weight. She also won a total of 16 matches this season. Leila Soto, Senior, Union County Champion at 138 pounds. First at Regions at 138 pounds. New Jersey State Qualifier, fourth place in the entire state of New Jersey at 138. She finished her senior year with an incredible record of 33 and 4. Let's give our girls and coaches a round of applause. Thank you all so very much for recognizing our teams tonight.
We are now going to transition into our It Takes a Village recognition. And this is always a phenomenal moment where we get to reiterate how important it is for our community partnerships. When we refer to our community partnerships, it's bigger than inside of these, the building. We have all of our schools, where we spoke earlier about climate and culture, you establish a community within the buildings. Then, we have community just across every school in a sense where administrators, teachers, we all come together to build upon one vision, and that's to meet the needs of our students and to serve them. We then branch off to our community, to our staff members, to our support in and out of the classrooms within the buildings. And we are pleased to acknowledge and recognize that our first award will be going to staff members in the building who show up each and every day to do what's best for children, and that is to feed them first. So, I am going to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lewis, who would like to acknowledge our first recipients.
Good evening. We are really excited to have the opportunity to acknowledge members of our food service company Pomtonian. Feeding our students breakfast and lunch is a critical component of their school day. Unfortunately, Ms. Rodriguez was not able to be here this evening, however, she did share with me some sentiments that she would like me to share with the school community. Amidst the laughter and chatter of energetic children at School Number Eight, there exists a group of three beautiful unsung heroes who play a vital role in the well-being of our young learners. These ladies are our friendly, hard-working, and dedicated cafeteria workers, whose commitment to ensuring the children's needs are met goes beyond the daily grind of meal preparation. When the students step into the school cafeteria, they are greeted with warm smiles and cheerful greetings from the cafeteria staff. These friendly faces create an inviting atmosphere for the children, turning the cafeteria into a space where not only hunger is satisfied, but where bonds are formed, especially with our special education students. The cafeteria workers go out of their way to know the names and preferences of each child, making every mealtime a personalized and enjoyable experience. Early mornings, you'll find them chopping vegetables, cooking up meals, and ensuring that each dish is delicious with their extra-special touch. Their hard-working ethic ensures that the children receive well-balanced meals that contribute to their overall health. Their friendly, hard-working, dedicated cafeteria workers at School Number Eight are the unsung heroes who play a pivotal role in adding the growth and well-being of our young learners. Their warmth, work ethic, and dedication to putting kids first make them an integral part of School Number Eight, and it takes a village to raise children. And as we celebrate these three remarkable young ladies, we would also like to recognize and appreciate the significant impact they have on the lives of our children daily. Lady Teresa and Yadi, we here at School Number Eight want to commend you for all of your hard work and dedication and let you know how much we truly appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to transition to recognizing our staff member. Again, as we build upon our community, excuse me, as we build upon our community, we cannot forget about the hard work and dedication that the staff put into making sure that the building is supported, to make sure that papers, plans, phone calls, and anything that's needed to support the administration is being carried out with excellence. I am excited for the next staff member to come on up, but first, I'm going to call Mr. Firestone to also help with recognizing the staff member.
Kelly Cosio. What more can I say about Kelly Cosio? Come on up, Kelly. What more can I say about Kelly Cosio that Lyndon doesn't already know? Kelly has worked in the Athletic Department for over 20 years and has always been very involved within the community. Kelly has taken a lead role in the Lynx Walkathon and Halloween Parade. I can honestly say that this department would not run without her. I probably thank her at least once a day for everything that she has done for myself, our students, and the rest of the department. In fact, if I'm not thanking her, I can be seen contributing to her caffeine addiction by buying her coffee to show my appreciation. This award is just another feather in her cap. I'm truly grateful to her, and I'm very thankful that the district is recognizing her tonight. Thank you so much, Kelly.
And last but not least, we are here because of the students. And now, we get to recognize a student who has been making phenomenal strides in and out of the classroom, and I'd like to call up Principal Kuntz, who will join in and acknowledge the student.
Good evening, thank you Superintendent Bergens. Tonight, we'd like to honor a very special young lady that is passionate and committed to bring an awareness to black culture and the African-American experience. She works with the Black American Culture Club, and during Black History Month, she was very instrumental and diligent in organizing the Black Cultural Festival, which highlighted many achievements of black American poets, academics, writers, inventors, and so forth and so on. It was a wonderful, wonderful event at Lyndon High School. She's also a very savvy and brilliant entrepreneur, as she worked diligently to market merchandise, to generate funding, as well as deliver a positive and strong message to our community. This is the joyous part of the job for me, honoring our students and recognizing all the wonderful work that they do. She is a very, very brilliant student, very passionate about all of the work that she does. So, tonight, we'd like to honor Ms. Savan Johnson.
In addition, in addition to all of Savan's extracurricular activities, I'd like to speak briefly to the academic student that Savan is. She's a member of our Kane Scholar Academy, meaning while at Lyndon High School, she's also duly enrolled at Kane University and taking college-level classes. Might I add, she has maintained an A GPA in her college and high school courses for ninth and 10th grade year. Okay? She's in high school and college at the same time, earning straight A's, and involved in all the other extracurricular activities.
And that will conclude my superintendent's report.
At this time, we'll have the attorney's report.
Thank you. Two items on my report tonight. The first one is one we discussed in, on Tuesday night during the work session. We need to retain an outside firm to come in and do an investigation for us, so this will be taking care of that. And then, item number two is, we went out for bid for an HVAC product, and there were some issues with our specifications that popped up after the bids were submitted. So, our architects would like to revise those specifications that initially went out. So, I'm asking that, that all of the bids received, there were two bids, right, John?
Two.
That both bids be rejected, so that we can substantially revise the specifications, and also that you authorize John to go back out for bid for that project. Okay? So, with that said, I'll present items one and two to the board for approval.
Second, roll call, please.
You say both of them going to be rejected?
Yeah, first things first, after I answer your question, we do need a motion. I'm not on the board, I can't make a motion to move it, so we need somebody else to make a motion in a second, and then John can call the roll. To answer your question, yes, we're going to, we're going to reject both of the bids. If you have specific questions on that, we're going to have to go into closed, I can't, because it's attorney-client advice as to why we're doing it.
Motion to approve the attorney's report?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Moving on to the education report?
Yes. Education Committee Upon the Recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent presents the following motions of the Lyndon Board of Education. I approve item one through page 21, because you missed page 18, so it's now it's 21 pages. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second for items one through 22?
Twenty-one, because they missed a page, so it has, it's 21 page now, item 21. Okay?
Yeah, it's items one through 21.
Twenty-one. Yeah, 21, because they missed page 18.
It's a resolution, resolution number 18.
It's missing, there's no 18. Okay? All right?
So, one through 17, and then 19 through 21.
I respectfully ask for a second, thank you.
Second. Roll call.
22? Yeah? You have item 22 on the agenda?
Oh yeah, there's the 22.
I think there's 22 items on the education report, that's what I was asking John. So, it should, it should be items one through 17, and then 19 through 22.
Yeah, 19 through 22.
So, can we get a motion in second on that?
Motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Do the motion, Malaysian.
Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to the personnel report. As Mrs. Perkins mentioned earlier, we are moving number, item two for number three. So, the Personnel Committee upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following motions to the Lyndon Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I'd like to ask for a second to approve items one through 30.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to Buildings, Grounds, and Securities.
Isn't it the Finance Report next?
I'm sorry, Finance Report. Somebody take my Finance Report. The Finance Committee upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following motions-
No, but I know that we had problems, I want to know if this had anything to do. This is something completely different. You know, it's like, my, my only concern is that, if it's not about testing, I have another question. The question I want to ask is that, we are, the Board is now expected to pay a whole lot of money for these services, and we, I think we didn't have enough time for us to actually get a lot more companies to, to bid, put it out for bid, so we could get a lot more companies, because the deadline is in, we need it.
Well, the infrastructure expires May 31st.
Yes, May 31st, yes. We are in the, ending of March, we have to make over a half a million dollar purchase before the deadline. Why is this coming to the Board now and not before?
We didn't know about it until December, when the Cisco announced that our current hardware is coming to end of life.
But if you did know about it in December, why didn't you bring it to the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendents, bring it to the attention sooner, so we possibly could have still had time to do some bids on?
I brought a, I got a quote for... ...hardware.
Would you be able to provide us what, what this purchase entails?
Entails replacing an existing appliance that has five servers, and that's running 69 virtual servers.
Thank you.
So you said five servers that will be covering our entire school district? I'm not a technology person, I'm just a logical thinker. So my question is, is that the company that you selected, and we have to spend over half a million dollars, how long would this, maybe, I do not know if the question make any sense, but...
Is it a year purchase?
Is it, yeah, is it an annual purchase, or is it a license for a certain length of time?
It's five years.
You seem like you're not sure, is it, or is it not?
I'm not sure of the details, but the hardware normally lasts like six to seven years, and then there's also licensing involved for the software.
So this amount is for five years, or each year's a different amount, or it's the same for the five years? Okay, maybe I rearrange it. Do you have to pay, do we have to pay more money within the five years, or no, this is the amount right here?
We're gonna have to pay more for other services involved with the installing.
Other services, I'm sorry for cutting you off, other services like what?
Installation and maintenance.
Okay, so, what is this in detail? Being that we paying this much money, what is that in detail that we paying this much money for? I thought with this large amount of money, everything would be included, it's not?
No.
No, so what is included?
The actual hardware and licensing for five years.
So this is the actual setup fee, and then we'll be paying for...
An additional.
Monthly or yearly maintenance and...
Well, no, we had, I, the, we had asked these questions, about 300 to 350,000 of it is for the hardware, the actual servers that are going to be going onto our property. 200, you know, I want to say 250, 275, only because there's, we code it a little bit differently than, than, so it is for, I believe it's a three-year, I won't say service plan, but you know, providing for all of that. What Bo was also speaking about was that there are going to be additional costs for migration of the software that we have on our current servers over to, to the new ones. In regards to going out to bid, we had asked that as well. We are a Cisco district, you know, many of our, our programs are running off of Cisco, so we wouldn't necessarily be able to go with a different software, you know, and I'm sure you guys know with the technology, it's, you know, we're, if we are going to eventually look at going away from Cisco, it would be something that would have to be, you know, planned for like five years from now, because we would have certain systems that need to come off. The hardware should last, we spoke about this, from, you know, seven years to 10 years, so that portion of it should not be an issue. We did speak about the possibility of, you know, I think it's, I think it was three years, and then what we had done previously, which was, I think, renew on a year-to-year basis, you know, for, for this, for, like I said, for this software piece.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We really, we just wanted to, to get a better understanding. I do apologize if we put you on the spot like this, but technology, I'm sure all of us, technology is something that I'm sure most of us are still learning about.
But wait, I just have one little concern that, and I am sorry if you are put on the spot, but when you have the responsibility that you have, I do expect for us to get a more timely, if you found something out like this in December, I know there's a cause associated, this should be coming up sooner than later, because now we're put up against the wall to make a decision that we have to not take lightly, and we have to make a decision because now we're in urgency. And I hate being in urgency. I would like the respect to be put, if it hap, if you knew something was happening in December, tell the people, that you have to tell the people what's going on, so we can be better informed, and we can be better prepared to make a better decision. I don't like to be put on the wall and make a decision last minute. Thank you.
I just want to know how, how, how the process will take place, in the sense that would it be done during spring break, or, or would it be done, because if you're changing hardware and software, then students cannot work. So how, how, how would it try, how would a replacement take place?
So we, we spoke with them today, and we informed them that it will have to be done after school hours, so there's no disruption to any components of our server. It's not just, it's all of our hardware, so it's our telephones, it's, it's anything that's connected to the digital world. So in a nutshell, the hardware is expiring and needs to be replaced, and so we, we want to make sure that it's all up and running as the deadline is March, I'm sorry, May 31st, but we do have state testing, so, starting May 1st, so the goal is to make sure everything is in place prior to May 1st.
Will we have assistance from the Cisco techs as well?
Yes, that's who we're in communication with.
Thank you. Any other questions on the Finance Report?
I'm just kind of confused.
Thank you, sir.
We absolutely need this, correct?
Yes.
Right, we absolutely need this. So I understand we got kids that's testing, would this interfere with them being tested? Because being that everything, you know, is not going to work right away, so would this work for them to do what they have to do?
We had, again, we had spoken about this, the, the testing is internet-based, so what we're talking about here is really our network, our system, and it's not, you know, not the connectivity, rather the, the programs that we have running on our network, as, as Mrs. Perkins spoke about, you know, the, things like the phone and, and things like that. So we won't, I guess the, the key is, is that this is not going to affect internet access, which is what, which is how the testing is done now, it's just basically logging in, there's nothing that we're downloading onto our system and then being shared out that way.
Okay, no problem, thank you. But if that was the case, then why did we have trouble, trouble with testing?
That would be a different issue, yeah.
Any other discussion on Finance?
I just have a suggestion regarding Finance. I, I, I have, you know, you, I want to thank you for the amazing report you gave us on Tuesday regarding our preliminary budget. And for the people of Linden, I am, even if it's a preliminary budget, I want to say that it looks like our, our real estate taxes situation looks pretty good, and I'm happy about that. But my only concern is, is that, when I looked at the budget, as I mentioned earlier, is that we do not have any grants. And, and I, I know that the city has a company that they use in order to write grants, so I would really like us to use a shared services, so we could start doing some grant writing with the city. Another thing that, that, so please look at, see if we could look at the city, and see if we could have shared services, so we could get focus and getting more grants for districts. The more grants we get, is the more services we could provide for students. Another issue that really is a pet peeve of mine, you know, I have worked all my life in for-profit, so I still cannot process not-for-profit, because most of my career has been in for-profit. And I look at companies like Apple, Cisco, all those big companies out there, that we, of the, that they take a lot of money from the district, and they're not giving back. I think that these companies, this is my opinion, okay, that we should find a way to get a good scholarship fund going again, you know, scholarships is my baby, right? We should have a good scholarship fund going, where all these vendors that we are spending money with, should be giving money back to our school system, so we can have a robust scholarship, a scholarship program, where we could be getting good money for students to help with scholarships.
I agree.
Do you guys, what are, what are your thoughts on that?
I agree, I agree.
You know, I, I envision, we have all these schools, and you drive by Linden High School, and the, the, it's empty on the walls. I, I envision we have a big television donated by Apple, that we could use, and the walls itself, you know, it have, you go to some of those schools, and they have big screens on the wall, just as, as big as the Tiger Stadium, and they use it for advertising and different things. We need to find ways to raise money. When the Board have to go out, and, like, Board members have to go out and try to ask businesses for, or different people to contribute to, to an event at Disney World, where help our students, and we have all these vendors out there, to me, I think that we need to do a better job raising money for our students, not only for scholarships, but for different activities. Another thing I would like to see happen, is I would like us to have a better partnership with Linden local businesses, where we could literally have, have opportunities to reach out to some of our, our, our local companies in the city, to see if we could also help with providing grants or investing in our students' future for scholarships and different events, if stuff like that is possible. Mr. Garcia, I know that, is it possible for us to be doing stuff like that, is it legal?
Well, you can ask people to donate to fundraising causes, just like you could ask anybody else. What you can't do is condition a contract on them giving to your charitable cause. You know, you, there cannot be an expectation that in order for them to do, to get business with the, this, the Board, or because they have business with the Board, that they should also be giving donations. I mean, I think the vendors would, would tell you that they provide us, you do pay them, right? We, you know, any vendor that we use, we pay money, but they also provide a service to you. So again, you can, you can ask them to contribute, certainly, nothing wrong with that. Just be careful of saying that they should, or that there's any sort of expectation that they're going to do anything, just because they have a contract with the Board. That, that I think would, would be something that I would strongly advise you against. And, and I don't think you're saying that, but I just, I just want to be clear, because sometimes people, people, people who have an agenda could twist things and take it out of context, so I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, but in a situation like that, is it done through a 501(c)(3), or could it be done just through regular fundraising?
I don't, I'd have to have a better idea as to what exactly you want to do, so we could talk about it offline?
Yes, okay.
And, and we can make sure that we, that we, you know, we give you the proper advice, and we can set the proper structure to do that.
Okay, so we need to look at ways to raise money for students, so our students could be involved in more extracurricular activities that will, you know, we have to take a holistic approach to developing our students. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Now, we'll move to Buildings, Grounds, and Securities.
The Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval, motions one through number eight. Looking for a second.
Second. Roll call.
Well, any discussion?
One last discussion, I saw you mention today about the graduation, all right, the graduation is going to be held again, in Tiger Stadium, right? And of course, we're gonna have to have, what is it called? If it rains?
In climate weather plan.
Yes.
God, I hope it doesn't. Believe that too? Any other question? No? Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Moving on to Planning and Policy. The Planning and Policy Committee upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval, items one and two. I respectfully ask for a second? Second.
No, I, if I may say something regarding the opioid situation, with, with the first reading, are we going to make the revision in the first reading to include additional people within the building to be trained on, on...
Well, that's what it says in the regulation, so then, so the policy will allow us to now explore getting more people.
All right, so we would be able to like train principals?
Yes.
And other people to be able to help? Okay, good.
Any other questions? Should we wait for Sam, since we only have four now?
Yeah, you have to.
Yes.
We have to wait.
Roll call? Any discussion?
One last discussion. I saw you mention today about the graduation. All right, the graduation is going to be held again in Tiger Stadium, right? And of course, we're going to have to have, what is it called? If it rains?
In climate weather.
Yes.
God, I hope it doesn't. Believe that too. Any other question? Roll call?
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes. And here he comes.
At this time, we're going to move on to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes. Should we wait for Sam since we only have four now?
Yeah, you have to.
Yes.
We have to wait.
One moment, please.
I mean, you could start it, and we can just...
Roll call?
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Save us two seconds.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Ulyss?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes. And here he comes.
At this time, we're going to move on to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Craig Haller in 120 Donaldson Place. First of all, I'd like to donate a set of books, children's fifty books, to the school. That's number one. Number two, last month, I talked to different people about the wonderful women on our board, and I noticed staff, they must have dresses that are sitting in closets not being used. It might be a great idea to take some of these unused gowns or dresses out of their closets and donate them so that people that cannot afford prom dresses to use these nice dresses for the prom. I believe that's all I have at this point, but I'd like to bring up the set of books.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Donna Hernandez, 133 Princeton Road. Just a question, the personnel, it was asked to approve items 1 through 30, but there's 29 on here. Was something added?
Oh, 1 through 29. What was removed wasn't a number, it was just removed from item 3. So there wasn't anything additional, just 1 through 29.
As you, you know, as we're talking about graduation, if we have to do it indoors, I know everybody's been working on trying to find an indoor facility. But if it is in our high school, and I think I brought this up last year, we've had cops there, and we've had our security. And when it was time for the students to walk up to get their diplomas, I don't know if you've noticed, but the parents got up and started standing in front of everybody that were sitting on the bleachers. And they were blocking their way of seeing their child. It was asked for them to move, and these parents just looked at them with nasty looks. They were blocking the way to the students going to the restroom, and students, they weren't letting the students go back to their seats. I was sitting at the end by the, you know, and I was asking people, can you please let these students go back to sit in their seats? They looked, rolled their eyes, and continued to not let them go. So if we're paying people to be there for security, can we maybe ask them to remove these people and have them sit down? I know it does get very crowded in there, you know, we, you know, maybe people are standing, but not, try not to block the way. Because, I mean, it was very rude to the students and to the parents that, you know, sitting on the bottom bleacher, they had no, they couldn't see anything, you know. So that's just something I wanted to bring up again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's just hope we don't have that situation next year, and we could do it in the Tiger Stadium.
But we will have it.
Sorry, I can't, it's just too short. I keep trying to grow, and it's not happening. Good evening, Claudia Dolan, 1309 Thomas Ave, Linden Education Association Vice President and Instructional Mathematics Coach at Schools 5 and 10. Just wanted to take a moment to say Happy Ramadan and acknowledge all of those that celebrate as we look ahead to the end of Ramadan Eid in the middle of April. Just want to talk about how honored I am to be a staff member in a district that acknowledges other religions and makes sure that we embed that into the calendar, and I look forward to what's to come for upcoming years. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge teachers and support staff members who have been working tirelessly to create a safe space for their students during this time, especially those students that are fasting. I know that that is not always easy to make those accommodations, and I appreciate those that are doing that. I actually had the opportunity to learn a lot about Ramadan while we were virtual, and a student of mine was actively fasting. And he said that the best part of being virtual was that he had the chance to log off and go pray with his family. And I thought that that was really special. So I keep that in mind throughout these days, that as these students are actively fasting, maybe they're losing out on some of their prayer time and their prayer space, and how sacred that is to them. And so I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cherie Holmes, and I'm a youth ministry leader at Morning Star Community Christian Center at 1009 Chandler Avenue. And being here tonight was important to me because I wanted to know what you guys had going on with the youth and what we could do to contribute to the school district as a youth ministry. And one of the things we do offer is a financial literacy program, and we do have a scholarship program. So if there's anything that we can do to help you all get these scholarships, get your kids prepared to apply for scholarships, we are more than willing to do that. So reach out to us, and we will definitely help you. And I will be back next month with the young man that is running our financial literacy program, so he can give you some more details and depth, okay? So let us know if there's something that we can do.
Thank you. You see, we got a partner already, right? Thank you for wanting the partnership with this Linden Board of Education. We appreciate you.
Anyone else?
Someone's online.
Someone's online? One moment, please.
Evening, everybody. Rob Engel, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey, LHS Social Studies teacher, proud LEA president. As spring has snuck up on us, I wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the wonderful things that our members across the district have been putting on for our students, right? We're talking about building partnerships and building relationships, but what I don't want us to lose sight of is the fact that the strongest partnership that a school district can have is with its staff members, right? We offer so many different types of programs. These programs, the programs that I'm about to speak on were predominantly funded by NJEA grant funds and powered by Linden EA member effort. They help to build our students in an incredibly holistic way, right? The goal is to help build well-rounded students. At Schools 8 and 9, one of our members established a monthly book club. At the middle schools, a financial literacy program helps to teach our students the value of their money. Next week, at the high schools, some of our staff are holding a cultural celebration, we're calling the Rice Festival, to honor all of the different cultures at our school that use rice in their diets every day. Culture and food are such a big deal. These programs help to broaden our students' horizons and help them explore parts of the world that they might not otherwise learn about. To Dr. Berghammer's goal of building a scholarship archive and a scholarship knowledge base for our students and families, at the high school just last night, our counseling department held a scholarship night for seniors, a college application process night for all other LHS families. These types of programs demonstrate the ingenuity and thoughtfulness and care that our members are bringing to help grow our students every single day. If we want to help our students become as well-rounded as possible, I need to urge us not to lose sight of the relationship, of the partnership between the school district and its staff. We only have to tap the resource that is our dedicated staff, the folks who are showing up day in and day out, who have spent months, years, decades, committed to our students. Don't forget about that partnership, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone's online, right?
Yes. Can we have the person online?
Evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Carte Hawkins-Reed. I reside at 730 Jackson Avenue. I would like a bit of assistance for one of my children, who is a sophomore. She's been sitting in a Spanish class that has not had a teacher that can teach the content for quite some time during this marking period. I understand the teacher is out ill, and the sub is not providing any work. But before I go any further, let me commend the principal for getting back to me. As soon as I emailed Vice Principal Rivera, the principal called me the very next day. And then had Ms. Miguelas, I hope I'm saying her name correct, had her contact me. And basically, what they both explained to me was that the body in the room is not trained to teach the content. I understand how subs work because I've been an educator for over 20 years myself. However, I take issue with the fact that my daughter's been sitting in a class, which is one of her strongest subjects, in which she's an A student, and all she will be offered is a P for passing. Now, we are on a structured plan of having our goal met of attending college, and we don't want a P. I find that unacceptable when this is one of her strongest subjects. So Ms. Miguelas's reason was, I'm sorry, the way she explained it was that they will put the sub in touch with the other Spanish teacher to hopefully teach some content. But it's almost the end of the marking period. So as a board, how can you help my daughter, and me as a parent, ensure that my daughter is learning every day in Spanish class instead of sitting in a study hall?
Thank you for providing that information. What we've done to help mitigate the teacher shortage is we're looking at qualified substitutes. And we have teachers who will step up and provide the lesson plans for the substitutes to ensure that instruction is being carried out. So I will be connecting with Ms. Miguelas, who is one of our supervisors, who you spoke with, as well as Mr. Coombs, to learn a little bit more about that, to ensure that that takes place in the classroom.
Okay, and also, I have a set of twins. So the other daughter, well, both of them are in a SAT prep class, with a math teacher has been out and has been assigning, given assignments from Khan Academy, but not giving any strategies on how to effectively take the SAT test. Language arts, yes. Math, no. So what can be done about that also?
That's going to have the same type of strategy. We have our math supervisor that I'll be speaking with, and that's how we have to, we have to have the building administrator and the supervisor of the content area. We come together to establish a plan and to learn more, and then finally is get a solution to the problem.
Thank you. I look forward to your attention in this matter.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
Mrs. Perkins, is there any, any way, I know that us, we don't have, is there any, any other options we could use so that we could get more qualified teachers? I know we, we're doing so much as it is. We have change of advertising, we have gone to all the different job fairs that reflect the demographic or population. We are doing so much. What else can we do in order to get more teachers in our classroom? Do you guys, Mrs. Perkins, Ms. Ulyss, do you have any suggestion? I know we were thinking about going, if we had to go out of the country to get teachers, but the question is, if they're not certified, what are they? If they're certified in another country, could they actually come to America and teach? They can't, right?
They can't come here to teach.
Well, that is correct. So a few additional things that we are exploring how to, again, mitigate the teacher shortage is looking at several models. And yes, there are some models out there where districts across the nation are partnering with out-of-the-country districts and organizations to bring in certified educators into their system. So we are beginning that process. We're also looking at, looking at our current staff. I think one of the best things that we have about our Linden district is we encourage growth and to build up our teacher capacity through our support staff, our aides, and our paras, to join on to the teacher force. So we are excited that a lot of our hires are coming from that pool, but we do want to increase that as well. We had a meeting with an organization today to address the programming that they offer to ensure that we can cover a course that we have on our books, because right now, again, back to the teacher shortage and specialization for certifications. So we're in the, we're exploring it in the midst of, as you stated, what we're doing, increasing our presence at job fairs, increasing our presence on online platforms, and in the word of mouth from our staff and our community. So we're actively pursuing this charge because this is a concern across the nation. And we all know that everything's competitive right now, so we're also looking at that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Sure.
I think I've thought about, like, signing bonuses for teachers, going to colleges and things like that?
Oh, yes, we have. We have tried everything.
In other states as well?
Everything.
Okay.
You see, this problem is not just local, this problem is nationwide. Where almost every district is suffering the same problem we have with teacher shortage. And we are actually, you know, when the parents spoke, just, no, we're here, we know it, and we, as I said, we were even thinking of if we could get teachers from out of the country. We have been trying everything to see if we could, you know...
Okay, thank you.
Make it work. But we thank you very much for your concern and your recommendation. But if you have anything that you think that you could share, I would welcome you to call the superintendent and talk with her about your suggestions to get us more teachers in the classrooms. Certified teachers.
There aren't any other comments. We're going to move on to new and unfinished business. Don't have anything? I think we've talked about a lot of the new and unfinished business, the shared service with the city for the grant writer, raising money for student partnerships, and donating dresses to the students. So I think we're good, everyone? Okay. Now, we're going to move on to board member comments. Would any board member like to make a comment?
Well, I mean, mine is going to be quick and short today. My condolences goes out to the families of Ms. Charlotte Gessler. Even though I didn't know her, I do thank you for your service, and thank you for the lifetime that you address over here at Linden, for being dedicated teachers. Thank you, and sorry to the family. And Mr. Dr. Tomasek, the short time that I got to know him was a very... And Mr. Dr. Tomasek, the short time that I got to know him was a very good short time that he gave a lasting memory because he did turn this around. When he came aboard, he started turning this around and we felt that change immediately. And that is a man that, he left us, he looked good and he never showed if he was suffering. That's a lasting memory also because he's always putting himself before anybody else. And to know how quickly, when he left us, went to freehold and how quickly he just turned for the worstest, even when he was talking to us still after he left, he didn't show that he was hurting. So he was a strong man and that type of leadership is something that is lasting here in Linden. I got to thank him. Thank him for his short time with us but long time with us. And Ms. Perkins filled those shoes up pretty quick also because that was a lot to fill up. And the leadership, I think he left, he left a lasting impression on Ms. Perkins also. So moving forward, there's things that, even though we lost him, he will always be here. He will always be here because we will probably always talk about him for the next few years that we're still here. And they will probably still speak about him after we leave because as long as Ms. Perkins is in the home, she's always going to have a piece of Rocco there and the staff that work with Rocco, they'll always have a piece and good memories that they'll have to speak about him. So may he rest in peace and may his family find the peace and all the good that he did for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I concur with you, Sam and Dr. B, so thank you both for your comments this evening. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Ulysses.
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.